First order of business is to call for nominations for board chair.
I'd like to nominate Keith Roberts.
I'd like to second that.
The other nominations? All in favor of Keith Roberts as Chair of the School Board, say aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
Onward to more business. Thank you again for your faith in letting me do that for another year. The next order of business is to elect a vice chair. Are there any nominations for that?
I'd like to nominate Bill Baker for vice chair.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Keith makes it easy to be vice chair.
The next order of business is clerk. Are there any nominations for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Stacy Riley.
I'd like to second that.
All right. Should we vote even though she's not here? Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The next one is the policy committee. Do I have a nomination for a policy committee member?
I'd like to nominate Colleen McKinnon for the policy committee.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, congratulations. Thank you very much, Colleen. Next is on the negotiations committee. Do I have a nomination for that?
She actually said you don't have to do the negotiations committee.
Oh, okay.
Because there's nothing to negotiate.
Okay. We will do that at the appropriate time when that body commences. Facility committee. Do I have a nomination for a member of the facility committee?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Baker, please.
All right, I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
Motion carries. Technology, we're going to leave blank for now. We're going to have a conversation with Stacy to see if she's interested at all and we'll fill it in. Pyrep. Any nominations for that?
I'll nominate Keith Roberts as a pyrep.
All right.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. I will gladly accept pending asking Stacy if she wants to do that or technology. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I need a nomination for three CSSU reps.
I...
Guess who it's going to be?
Larry, Mo, and Curly.
I'll nominate Colleen. Colleen?
I'll nominate Bill and Keith.
Perfect.
Perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And we are, it's filled in already, I assume we should probably reaffirm the Act 46 Study Committee.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Keith Roberts and Colleen McKinnon for the Act 46 Study Committee.
All right. I'll second Colleen's. You can second mine.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions I'm trying to ask.
Yes. Yep.
So, Bill's vice chair.
Yep.
Colleen is clerk?
No.
No.
Stacy's clerk.
Stacy's clerk. Colleen is assistant clerk.
Ah, Colleen's assistant clerk. And then, I'll write it.
There you go.
I got it, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we probably do for our audience.
For, what Polly used to say, our audience are men?
All right. 3.0 adjustments to the agenda. I have one. I'd like to add a 7.7 to discussion matters to talk about Teacher Appreciation Day. Any others? All right. Audience, are you guys here for, in your capacities, audience or for the presentation? Or both?
Both.
Okay. Do you want to say something now?
I just, I have a comment about the adjusted schedule that's been proposed.
Do you want to address that now or when we talk about it, which is? Where is that?
Seven.
7.1. It's our first discussion matter.
So I can wait until...
So it'll be, it'll be, we have a presentation next and then a couple of reports to the board.
I can.
All right. Then I think you guys are up on your presentation.
So I'm very, yeah, you stand up. So I'm very happy to introduce two members of our student council. This is Julia Grant and Caroline Hobbs. And they're here to talk to you about co-curriculars. So, girls, you can stand up in front. Julia has written a belief statement about student council, which is fantastic. And while she is reading that, I was going to just play a little, some slides that shows a couple of the things that...
Or you can stand up.
Yep, either one. And then, then after their presentation, they're going to talk a little bit in depth about, about student council. And then we'll also talk about GOV, Spelling B, and Enrichment.
Okay.
So ladies.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julia Grant, as was heard, and I am a proud member of the Heinsberg Community School Student Council. I believe the student council reflects their school and its students. Our student council values democracy. Our student council values the fact that everyone has a voice. Everyone has an idea that can make a change for the better. And our student council is one that appreciates sticking to your word. You can plan all you want, but it's just going to be a stack of papers until you make it into something that matters. We have no class president, no official government that makes all the decisions. When there are people designated to do the job, why pitch in is the mindset that encapsulates students in this situation. Everyone has something they can contribute, and we encourage kids to make their visions realities. We want people to know that if you have a genuine interest in donating your time to help bring people together, you are welcome and valued. This year, our student council has successfully involved kindergarten through eighth graders in a very successful food drive. We have planned and attended two amazing dances, and we have brought back the very missed microwave in our cafeteria and put in place rules that would keep it there. Currently, we are planning a reward for classrooms that worked hard to bring in extra cans for the food drive, a K-2 babysitting night, a sixth grade movie night, a fifth grade dance, as well as sixth through eighth grade dance, and more. We are also raising money for the eighth grade trip, a symbolic and memorable experience for eighth graders to have one last group bonding experience with some kids they have known for 10 years before they go to high school. We have created a council that is on call for any concerns, open to any ideas, and committed to making people happy. That is what it comes down to, really, is seeing smiles decorate people's faces when the job is done. You could say our student council is just a group of kids, and I suppose you would be right. But we're a group of kids committed to improving our school and community, and that is one of the most valuable things you can possess no matter your age.
Fabulous, Julia.
Very well done.
Thank you.
And sorry, I'm not smart enough to get this thing to loop, so it only played through once. Should, ladies, you want me to run through this really quick?
Sure.
Okay.
It's nice to be able to focus on your words.
Yeah.
So can I ask, did you write that?
Yes.
Is it a team effort to write that or?
I wrote that, yes.
That's very nice. I hope we get it captured someplace.
Actually, so they're going to go through, I don't want to throw them off there. We can take a look at the pictures after you describe these things. I think that's what should probably be best.
All right.
And I'll do the clicking for you, so if you guys want to start, that'd be great.
Okay.
So, the first thing we have listed here is the kindergarten welcome ceremony. It's one of the responsibilities for student council. So basically, what this is, is when the kindergartners first come into HCS, one of their first experiences is receiving a carnation from an eighth grader. And it's like such an amazing experience, and you get to connect with a younger student and like make them feel welcome to the school. And it was like, I almost cried. It was so adorable. And it was just amazing to see everyone connecting with a younger person and just making them feel welcome. So, that's that.
What, yeah, what happens after? What's the second piece of it?
So, they return that favor to us when we're about to graduate. So, in one of our last days before we graduate, they give us a carnation and they thank us for being there and giving them the carnation and welcoming them. And it's a great kind of cycle. So, yeah.
So it was awesome. When Julia and Caroline were in to talk about the presentation, Julia said exactly that. She's like, I think I'm going to cry thinking about it. And kudos to student council and Barb Spalding for, and Allegra for thinking of that event. And it's, it's one of the coolest things. It's, it's become a fabric of what we do.
I almost cried.
Yeah.
I wasn't even there.
So, the food drive, every year, our school conducts the food drive where kids of all grades collect cans that are then donated to the local food shelf. And it helps them, it helps those that are in need in the community. And it's a good way for the school to connect with the community. And it's also a good way to get the kids focusing on giving and not just receiving. It's also a good way for kids, the kids that we have, that want to help change the world someday by helping them take this little step. Wait, am I doing dances?
Yeah.
So, for dances, every couple of months, the student council will host a dance, typically sixth through eighth grade. And they're usually very successful. We have kids in the gym, and we have a DJ, and we play music, and we just dance and have a lot of fun. And there's concessions, and it's just a great way for everyone to connect with each other and just have a great time. And so those are usually really successful, and we have those every once in a while, so.
Because school should be fun, right?
Out of the dances and...
Oh. So, all right, so typically with Heinsberg Community School, I think it's been, they've been doing this ever since I started going to dances. But the last and final slow song, instead of individual dances, everyone groups up in a big circle. And everyone's included, and we try to get everyone out, even if they don't like dancing. And then we all just group in one big circle with our like arms around each other, and we just kind of sway to the music. And it's like a perfect ending to a really good night. So that's how we typically do things.
Do you want to also talk about the business side of the dances?
Yeah. So it's a good fundraiser as well if we charge a small admission fee for things such as eighth grade trip and different things like that. So it's a good thing for that as well.
Yeah. There's the economic piece too, so.
Yeah. Okay. And then the K-2 parent side out is an evening where parents can drop off their kids between kindergarten and second grade. And the eighth grader...
More for the whole three years.
For an evening.
For an evening. I like that.
And the eighth grader students have, provide care and food to the children until pickup time. And it helps form bonds between the two age groups. And it gives parents a time to have time by themselves. And it allows the kids that have been at Heinsberg for a long time to give back to the school. The next thing is the microwave. Last, no, the beginning of this year, there wasn't a microwave in our school cafeteria because in the past years, we weren't taking care of it, right? And there, at the end of the day, there'd be a bunch of food in it, and it just wasn't a successful piece of equipment for the cafeteria. And so a lot of people missed it, and it kind of compromised a lot of people's lunch situations. It was harder to bring leftovers and stuff like that. And so Mr. O'Hara said, if someone comes to me with a presentation about why we should have it and a way we can keep it clean, then we can maybe bring it back. So I brought him a slideshow about how it's easier for kids to eat more nutritious lunches, and it's just widely used and appreciated. And I, I placed a system that there would be cleaning materials and like a rag to clean out the microwave of any mess your food might have made. And I also said that if we couldn't handle it, and there was a couple of days when the microwave was still a mess after, then it would be proof that we actually can't handle it even if we have these things put in place. So it would be able to be taken away, but we'd have another chance with kind of new system to help out with that. So, and we did end up getting the microwave back, and I'm pretty sure the system has been working pretty well. And, yeah.
And what else did I make you do with the younger grades?
I had to talk about it to them, that one, yeah.
Yeah. Get agreement, yep.
Yes, I had to get agreement to make sure everyone would participate and make sure they would clean out the microwave. So I had to do a couple of different talks, and everyone was pretty much in agreement that if they could get this back, then they would take care of it.
Very compelling slideshow.
Maybe we should link that up.
Okay.
I'll get you some law school applications.
The eighth grade trip is, the, this trip is where the eighth graders go on a trip and with their teachers the last time. And it allows the eighth graders to have a final trip where they can have new experiences together and where they can collect our final, where we can collect our final memories before we head off to high school to make new ones. And this can be pretty important. Yeah. Some, some of the kids have been going together to school for like 10 years, so. Final goodbyes. Yeah.
That also made them sad.
Yes.
Thinking about it.
There were many periods during our meeting where I was like, I'm going to cry.
Would you like to take some questions?
Sure.
I have two questions. First off, thank you very much. Very informative. The first question that I have is a short one and probably for Mr. O'Hara, which is, on the eighth grade trip, do you want us to talk about that tonight? Or do you have the ball rolling enough that we can address that later to talk about the approval that needs to come because of the out of country aspect?
Because we, Barb and I had a conversation after our board agenda.
Yeah.
So I think that the next time we have a board agenda, I'll ask if we should put it on as an action item.
Okay. All right. The second one is sort of a more process one. So you talked about what student council does, but I don't understand who student council is. Who's on it and how do they get on it?
So basically, student council, we don't have official members. We have, we have periodic meetings and projects going on, and you can come to any amount of meetings you want and sign up for any amount of jobs you want. It's all about what kind of commitment you're looking for. Or if you want to just come to a meeting and give your input on something or put some ideas in some people's heads, that's fine too. But we identify student council as anyone who helps with the projects in some way.
And is it limited by grade?
We typically do a seven, eight, because those are kind of where the projects are based, and that way we all have the same lunch and rec time and that kind of thing, so it's easier to meet. It's also just easier if they have questions for like the teachers. Yeah. So we're all up in the same area. And then, you pretty much cover it. It's, you come when you want to take a project, and then if you're done after that project, then you can just leave and maybe come back. You don't have to stay the whole time.
Members are seventh and eighth, but one of the missions that Julia spoke with is that the seventh and eighth look at the entire school and how can they make decisions based on the good of the group.
And if, and if I may add, some larger decisions around like the eighth grade trip, we met as an eighth grade group.
Yeah.
So for some of those larger, we did a focus forum format, and then some decision-making as an every parent voice in those larger, in that larger group.
How do you develop agendas?
For what we're going to talk about in the student council? We typically just, whatever projects we're working on, we make sure those are covered. And, or a student council member who's kind of working hard to make sure people come to the meeting and stuff, will have a talk with Ms. Spalding and say, what do we want to cover? What things are we planning and what do we need to work on that are projects we're doing right now?
Girls, did you see what it did to my color? When we were picking what color the presentation was, I definitely wanted orange. But I can't.
Are you going to talk about these or do you want to show the pictures?
Yeah. Can you guys stay up here? And then I'll, then we'll show the pictures. But there's, there's two things in addition to student council, you may not have heard about in any of our previous presentations, and that's the GOV and the Spelling B. Both fifth through eighth grade. GOV, what I'm trying to let students know, Ms. Spalding knows this as well, is it's, it's accessible to all students. So you don't need to know what the capital of Myanmar is in order to be in the GOV. The GOV starts out really incrementally of 50/50, true or false, or two options where you have to pick one or the other. So, we had about 20, 20 students this year. I facilitate the actual GOV, and Barb coordinates it, and it's, it's just a ride to see the kids, and they all have a great time. And even though we do crown one winner at the end, the kids usually stick around for all the rounds to see who eventually comes out. And our winner is going to regionals next week, I believe.
And he goes to states. He goes right to states.
Oh, he goes right to states. So he's going to the states for GOVs next week. Spelling B, Spelling B was, so the way that I would encompass Spelling B is low-key practices, intense competition. I don't know if anybody's ever seen a Spelling B. It is so intense. All I had to do was get definitions for the moderator, and I was so nervous, like it's just, it's a nerve-wracking experience. And our kids did exceptionally well this year. They lost by one point, and, but it was, it was a team of seven, and four students at any one point in time were the spellers doing the Spelling B. But the practices are a ton of fun. They make T-shirts, they, we practice spelling, but overall, it's, it's just another fun competition.
Are practices for both of these things after school?
No, during lunch.
During lunch.
Yeah. During lunch and rec, and that's usually up to the, to the kids when they would like to. Spelling B happens mainly with the support of parent volunteers.
And how many kids did you say participate?
So, for Spelling B, probably 12 to 15 kids. There's, there's a mini tryout where you ask about 20 spelling words, and then you take the top eight. But again, it's very non-threatening. Everybody, you know, if, if they have a passion for spelling, they usually come, and if they, it's something that people work up to. I mean, once, like a fifth or a sixth grader may just participate just to see kind of where they're at, and then they, they learn and they grow from that, so. But we had a really strong team this year. Enrichment, enrichment at Heinsberg is now incorporated into the Imagine After School program. Opportunities this year included chess, sawmill, yoga, and along with the things that have been offered so far, summer programming. We've, we've kind of changed the way that we're offering enrichment opportunities in the summer. We've incorporated all of the possibilities into the Imagine Summer Program. But we have chess, sawmill, yoga, all of those things now becoming incorporated in the program. We're always looking for parent suggestions, community feedback. One possibility was sign language. We didn't get enough people, but we, we actually got somebody to come in to, to do a sign language enrichment, but there just wasn't enough interest from the student body. So if people have ideas for enrichment opportunities, let us know and we'll...
I feel like a blockhead, but sawmill is woodshop?
Oh, my gosh. Sawmill is amazing. So it's, it's a person that our Imagine director found, and they bring in a woodshop into the flex space. And everybody works five or six weeks on a project, and at the end of the, at the end of the week, or at the end of the session, they all have something that they can take home. Really, really cool enrichment.
But that's part of Imagine After.
No, it's, it's coordinated through Imagine now, but anybody can participate. So if there's, during the school year, if there's sawmill, chess, yoga, probably 75% of the kids do not attend Imagine.
Got it.
But if an Imagine student wants to attend, Imagine then works with the family so that they don't have to pay for an after-school program and an enrichment.
Got it.
So we take off the, the cost on the enrichment or on the after-school side and make sure that it goes to the enrichment.
What the comment I make is, is, that should be more clear. It's not, that it's a free after-school rule?
It's not free. It's free for the Imagine kids because they're already paying for after-school. But for anybody else who wants to participate in just sawmill, it goes in the Viking to say that, open to all students, here's the fee for that five or six week. And in there as well says that we offer scholarships for families that...
I think it's also important to note, if you're categorizing those things as enrichment, that they probably, we probably, to be fair, ought to mention all the programs that the rec department also does, which, after-school, some of which are arguably very similar to those.
Enrichment used to be coordinated through Heinsberg. You used to have a budgetary line that had an enrichment coordinator. So I was just trying to encapsulate the things that are still organized with the CSSU umbrella.
Yep.
But you're absolutely right, there's a ton of rec programs, and there's a ton of outside programs not associated with the rec that the kids also go to. I've been thinking about horseback riding and skiing lessons and things of that nature.
I have one question. Maybe I shouldn't put it out there, but maybe we had in the past, but my nieces and nephews who are of this, these guys' age, they do like DI or Odyssey of the Mind. Did we ever have that? We did, did it?
Have you guys ever been on Destination Imagination or Odyssey of the Mind? It's probably been...
Long time.
Six or seven years.
Don Weaver did it, right? With Mark and Beck.
So it's probably been six years. I would say right around my first year at Heinsberg.
Nice thing that we had it. If we didn't, I just, just trying to think of what your thinking around that is or...
Yeah. I mean, the more opportunities we can provide, the better. When I was in, when I was in previous employment, the, it was, a lot was driven by the student interest. So if there's, if it becomes part of the fabric and the culture of, of a place, then Odyssey of the Mind creates a life of its own. Then there's tryouts, and you gather teams that have been together for three or four years, and it becomes, it becomes a thing. I've had mixed success with Odyssey of the Mind and DI. I've done them both as a, as a leader. And, and I think that we offer a lot of similar experiences. And with Odyssey of the Mind and DI, most, quite a few of the teams get asked to go to nationals. I guess it would be the, and it became that everybody was going, and it became a huge expense that parents kind of knew was coming, and then they kind of peeled away in my previous place.
Got it. So it's one of those things that gains momentum of its own and then lives, and then if it loses momentum, then it kind of goes away is what it sounds like to me.
I think too, one of the impacts of when the shift in poli, I don't know if it's policy or law around who can meet with students and crack their chests and drive kids in your car. So programs like that often started at someone's kitchen table and moved into the school.
Makes sense.
And some of that feeder program is, is gone because we don't have that ability. And so you've got to really be committed to trying to make it work on a pretty significant scale.
And much like Spelling B, it was, it was really heavily parent volunteer oriented.
That's what I was going to say. It's, for, at least for Odyssey of the Mind, I don't want the other one, but you really have to have the right leader.
Right. Someone who's committed and is going to take it on.
It's volunteer, I think, and it's, it's a big commitment.
Got it.
And it goes, and I think this is probably where, I, I don't want to suppose where Keith was going, but without an enrichment coordinator, it takes a tremendous amount of time to drum up support and think of ideas and, and have them come to fruition. The parent group has, has put forth a couple of enrichment opportunities that have worked out well, but it's, it may be something that we look into in the future to regain that.
No, but the analogy, it sounds like what you're saying analogy I'll make is, is like with the ski program, you get a parent who's going to run it and manage it. You know, when their time's up, if someone else doesn't step up, then it just dissolves away. So it's no, it's right or wrong, it's not right or wrong or different, it's just how it rolls, so.
I think the school is cycling right now. Like one of the things we've noticed in the middle school is that over the last couple of years, we've graduated long-term families that we've had, you know, for years. And now we have a whole fresh group of kids that are like, I don't know that last name, I don't know that, you know? And as, as the school cycles through, you're going to have those changes.
Right. Okay.
Here's a thought.
Yep.
Hypothetically, if, you know, we were part of a SU that was considering consolidation.
Yes.
Might those schools combine efforts?
Mm-hmm.
And if there isn't that heft of effort at Heinsberg, maybe some Heinsberg kids might have opportunities at other schools, similar to what we're doing with some of our athletic teams when there aren't enough to field a full team.
So, so the, these slides went by really quick. So, uh, so the, these slides went by really quick, so I just wanted to give the, the girls an opportunity to talk about, uh, you, you have already heard about all of these things, but.
Can you go to the first one, cause that was, um, that's okay, we can sort.
There you go.
So this is the last sixth grade dance we had and, um, as you can see, um, this is the whole group. Yeah, that's the circle we were talking about.
Oh, that's nice.
So, yeah.
I don't know what people, uh, think about dances, uh, but Barb has been coordinating them for, uh, at least six years since I've been there. And in six years, I have not had one substantial issue at, at a school dance. So, I mean, the, the kids are incredibly responsible and.
Is that what, drama free?
Oh, uh, well.
Is that what you mean?
Uh, I wouldn't categorize that as substantial. Anyways.
And then this is, um, the concession stand where we can use some of the money that we have for our eighth grade trip.
And I, this is another very good photo, but one of the reasons I stuck, I found this photo to bring out is that Liam, who's in, in the, in the purple there, um, he's a kid that is not interested in coming to a dance, participate in a dance, but he's like, I'll come and set up, I run the concession stand.
Awesome.
He does like the accounting and the.
He's incredible, yeah.
Keeping the, like, he, he figures out kind of our profit margin and all that stuff. Like, he's really, like, he's really savvy about, like, he, and that's how he chooses to participate. We have other kids that participate in that way as well.
This is a fifth grade dance. We usually separate the fifth grade and the sixth through eighth grade because if we kind of had them all together, it'd be a lot of kids and might be kind of intimidating for the fifth graders. So, um, we typically have, once a year or more, we have a fifth grade dance and once, yeah. And so we have concessions and it's the same kind of idea. This one seems to be a costume one, there's just all kinds of fun stuff.
Can you talk about who, who does the music for the dance?
Um, oh, yes, um, typically a middle schooler will DJ the dance. So they'll make a playlist of popular songs and they'll, we'll have eighth graders or middle schoolers kind of helping people come on like, come on, let's dance and just getting, getting, getting everyone involved, so, yeah.
And it runs from three to five.
Yes, this is not too late. Um, this, this is, alright. This is, um, me with a microwave. This is the microwave that I made the presentation for to bring back and.
And, uh, when it came back, she got a, a round of applause and the guy was like.
She looks, she looks pretty proud of that one, doesn't she?
I like it.
Was it, was it the same microwave or did he spring for a new one?
I don't know.
I can't remember where you got it.
It looked so new.
Yeah.
It was clean.
Uh, this is the food drive and, um, this is one of our students, not from student council, um, helping collect some of the cans from one of the classes and bringing it to the flex space where we could sort what was expired and what wasn't and then donate to the food shelf. So we got all kinds of kids involved, even if they weren't normally a student council member and they just wanted to help out with just collecting cans or something, we got a lot of people involved, so that was really successful.
You wanna talk about when you do the food drive and why? Do you know when you do it and why you do it?
Um, we do it around February, but I'm not quite sure why.
I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, because, um, a lot of food gets donated at around Christmas time and you were trying to collect food for when the food, for after Christmas time, that's why I do it in February.
Yeah, excellent.
This is the food shelf, this is the food drive when we were at the food shelf and these are two people that were on student council. And, um, in the back, there's some food that we brought.
What food shelf do you donate to?
The Heinsberg Food Shelf. This is, uh, last year's eighth grade trip, which we're planning on doing a kind of similar one. And so this is them in front of the biodome.
And didn't we split up the whole grade into like different groups?
Well, so there was multiple parts of the thing, this isn't obviously the whole grade, there was, um, there was a big group and they spent some time together and then they split into smaller groups such as this, so everyone got time with everyone and then with some of their friends or whatever they wanted.
And they could spread out to different places and then we met back together at the.
Science museum.
Science museum. And, um, this is the whole grade after they had gone and bought little souvenirs like the hats.
And, yeah, so.
Yeah.
This is last year as well as kindergarten and welcome ceremony. And so we have people calling names and then the kindergartners come up and the eighth grader comes up and they present their flowers, so that's kind of what that generally looks like and this is another picture.
And then after we give the flowers, we, um, have to go, we, don't have to, we go sit with the kids that we give the flowers just so we kind of talk to them and then afterwards, we go to their homeroom and we read them a book.
Uh, we show them around the school a little bit and it's really, well, they show us around their room and we show them around ours, yeah.
I think that might be it. Oh, there's one more, sorry.
No, that's not one. Yeah, this is another one.
These are some of our past eighth graders and the kindergartners.
And, and each year they, they do their own thing with the flower ceremony, so like, like one year, the kids traced their hand, the eighth graders traced their hand and they wrote a note to the kids and it was really cute because the kindergartners went back to the room and got a crayon and they traced their hand on it. Your group did, you guys did cards, didn't you?
Yeah, I think we wrote little.
We did star cards.
Oh, we did name poems.
Oh, that's right, you did name poems, so every year they, they come up with their own, their own thing that works.
Way to welcome them.
Sometimes the whole group is sang to the group, sometimes we have some kids, Lewis and kids that like to sing, they'll, a small group will sing, so they, they, they create the assembly to be what they want it to be.
I think we also this year sang Count on Me.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, that was right. I'm not frostbite.
Thank you for it so much.
Thank you, guys, it was great. Thanks for coming.
Kudos on your presentation too.
Keep your.
Okay, it's awesome.
Report sixty-six point out of six point one is yours, Mr. O'Hara, if there's one in the, uh, materials, but I don't know if you want to elaborate or highlight.
Uh, just really, you know, just going on this, piggybacking on the girls' presentation, um, the sixth grade team, uh, organized and coordinated an effort to help the Bissonnet Field Project and it was amazing, they, they, um, raised over five thousand dollars and.
Wow.
A lot of good publicity in the, the local papers, um, but, uh, a huge success, so really proud of those students. Uh, and then, um, the, the other celebration is the SBL, PBL, PBGR presentation that we had with the parents and, uh, we had over fifty parents come and, uh, and I think on, on most other parent information nights, we've had between five and ten parents, so, um, kudos to the parent group for organizing the event and, and thank you to, um, Jeff Evans and Patty Thomaschott for being guest panelists. Um, we have, um, puppets and education coming, uh, formerly Kids on the Block and that's, uh, from a grant that, uh, local share Chevrolet and Dan Bogdan has, um, donated to us. So it's just, uh, we're gonna, we're in the middle of coordinating an effort to bring them in to raise awareness on, uh, differences and specifically autism and, uh, bullying and harassment prevention in the older grades. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up and, um, uh, different teams do different things for parent-teacher conferences. They can either happen throughout the year as needed or there's set days still on the calendar where, uh, they're identified for, um, teams that don't do them consistently throughout the year uh, to have the parents come in and as a, as a check, so that's coming up soon. But other than that, things are going pretty well.
Kindergarten, ten registered?
Yeah.
Do you have ballpark on, on how many more we expect?
Uh, we're anticipating fifty-five, um, but the, um, a, a note and the phone cau-, phone calls have gone out, uh, this week, uh, we have, because of the early learning partnership, we now have access to more, uh, children.
Yep.
And families, so, um, that effort has begun in earnest this week.
Jeff, with the, um, parent-teacher conferences, do you know what the participation rate is?
It's excellent, um, in the lower grades, it's, it's, uh, very close to a hundred percent. And in the upper grades, I, I think that, uh, we, we have a seven, eight teacher here. I would say it's above eighty percent? No?
Participation has dropped off a little bit for us this year. We do a lot of communication with like the Wednesday letter and a ton of email communication, so if you wanna count conferencing in terms of that communication, um, I would say we're probably at sixty to seventy-five percent if I do it ballpark in terms of, we do monthly walk-ins.
Yeah.
Um, we have, we've got some regulars that come every month and we have people who come, cut out on, on need basis, so.
So for overall during the year, do you have, um, contact with most families or?
I mean, we, we are constantly sending information out.
Yeah.
Um, and I think part of why we have less coming in is cause so much information.
Yeah.
Um, goes out, we also, with our monthly walk-in schedule, we did it the first week of the month and we just cut and hid with, you come back from vacation and it's the first Tuesday and we, we, you know, we're rethinking that for another year.
Yeah. Thanks.
Jeff, can I make a minor request?
Yeah.
I really appreciate the enrollment numbers. I'd love to see like, the trend, like, like, what was it last month, you know?
Yeah.
Just, maybe just the total number, just so in our own mind, we could just, I don't know, just something along the lines that the number on itself doesn't show me much. If it was five twenty-seven this month, if it was five twenty-one last month, I'd be going, alright, this is, putting us in a positive direction versus the other way, that would, if it's easy to do, I'd appreciate it. If it's a big hassle, then no biggie.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, the other, the other, uh, thing to highlight is, uh, our art teacher's added again. She's done, uh, two new installations. Uh, there's an Aboriginal mural, um, that she's created and, um, I'm not sure, it just said two murals, um, but we've, we've printed them off so that you can take a look at them, uh, and both were done by our sixth grade classes, but just yet again, uh, kudos to Katie O'Brien.
School looks great wherever you go in.
Any other questions on the principal's report?
I'll comment that, uh, since I have seventh graders, I'm a semi-regular, so I appreciate you guys doing that, especially with the whole PBL thing, trying to work your way through that, the Mrs. Balling and Mr. Darling have been, all of them, that's who I spent most of my time with and, and, uh, they've been great, so I appreciate it. Work for me.
Alright, six point two, parent council debrief. I don't think we have an official rep, but Jeff mentioned the, um, information night they had last week. Uh, Colleen and I were at a, uh, Act Forty-Six Study Committee meeting, I have to use the right term, thank you. So I couldn't go to the whole thing, but I arrived very late and I was floored with how many people were in the room when I arrived. You were one of them, so I assume you were there.
I was.
Most, about all the meeting. So I hope, I hope it was a good meeting, it certainly sounded it the last ten or fifteen minutes that I caught.
Uh, the meeting was very good, the feedback that I gave, Elaine was, uh, we need more time, but, next time, but it was, it was great, so, a lot of good information. Oh, and I, I wanna say, um, I'm gonna give kudos to Mr. O'Hara for, uh, leading the charge on that in the SU. It's coming down the pike and Jeff has seen how important it is, in my opinion, and I don't mean to speak for him, but I'll speak for what my impressions are, and I give him kudos for, uh, being at the leading edge instead of at the, the blunt back end, so I appreciate that.
Do we have minutes available anywhere that people could access?
So, uh, right now, we're in the process of, uh, editing the notes. There's copious notes taken, um, slideshow, uh, had some student reports and grades, so we're working through that, but, uh, it'll all be posted on the Pi, um, page and it'll be linked from the Viking.
Uh, anything from the facilities committee? I don't think we had anything to talk about, any other committees? Technology, policy, or anyone else have anything noteworthy?
Hmm? Is forty-six part of that?
Uh, yeah, I guess it is, so let's take that, thank you, that's a good opportunity. Colleen, do you wanna speak to that or do you want me to?
Um, if you want to, go ahead.
Sure, I will try to be brief, um, for those in attendance and for Bill. As most of you know, since late last summer, uh, we've had an Act Forty-Six Study Committee, um, comprised of representatives of the boards of all of the school boards in the CSSU schools and, uh, we have been studying whether a consolidation of all of our school districts is something we wanna pursue and we have put together a report that was submitted to the Agency of Education on Wednesday?
Last week.
Last week.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning. Uh, the Agency of Education will look at it and give us some feedback and probably make some suggestions, which we will implement and then submit it for their official action at their April.
Then it goes to the State Board of Education.
Then it goes to the State Board of Education for action at their April meeting.
Correct.
Um, and thereafter, uh, in part of this process, the Act Forty-Six Study Committee within the SU then needs to decide whether to put it to the voters and we, while we have not had an official vote, it was very much the feeling of the group, the unanimous feeling of the group that we're gonna put it to the voters. Um, so we are anticipating a, uh, vote on Tuesday, June seventh for consolidation uh, under our proposed framework, which is very simply to consolidate all of the Chittenden South Supervisory Union school districts into one school district, which I believe we have called the Champlain Valley School District. There will be lots of communication and information forthcoming from the study committee over the next couple of weeks.
In one of those dates, we're gonna, um, have a, a night here at CVU for everybody within the SU who wants to attend, April twelfth, um, starting at six o'clock and we're calling it, um, Act Forty-Six Night at CVU and it's an opportunity for people from all the communities to come together and, and, uh, try to work together to figure out what it means and, and better understand it. So we'll present and we'll have opportunity for discussion and so forth.
Can I ask, since I'm here?
Sure.
Why is that, tell me about why that's even being considered in such a huge? I can understand the consolidation of schools, not in our district, but can you just summarize really quickly why that, what the advantages to that would be?
Easy question, big answer, um, to be elaborated on in the communication, uh, communications that will come out and at that forum that Colleen mentioned. Uh, I think I personally have a two-part answer. Part one is for, uh, the kids in our schools, for a better and more consistent education across all the schools, to be able to share some resources and, for example, one of the things that I mentioned hypothetically, I wasn't so hypothetical about it, being able to do that kind of sharing across our schools, which we can't really do very easily, if at all right now, would be a lot easier. The second reason is a monetary reason, because the state has tax incentives available to everyone in the state to do this and we think they're worthwhile to pursue and if we don't do it now, you lose those tax incentives and there are many people that are of the belief that this would happen eventually and you don't get those tax incentives. Moreover, a lot of schools across the state are doing this and although those tax incentives have been offered, there's no pool of money to pay for them, so they're gonna have to be paid for by someone and that's everyone else.
Mm-hmm.
So if a lot of people are doing this, we're gonna be not only not getting the, and we don't, we don't get the tax incentives ourselves, but we're also paying for the other schools to have their tax incentives.
Can I, and I, I'd just like to add a couple of things. I think one of the fears that we've heard is this fear of losing. I think one of the fears that we've heard is this fear of losing local voice, local control. And really, part of what we need to put forward is we can't lose that local input into our schools. I think what will happen is we'll see our principals take leadership with how they engage the communities and about what they want to see happening in the school. The consolidation, what it does is for those activities that cost a lot of money, require a lot of time for coordination, and I think professional development is one good example. If that can be centralized, that allows more resources to indirectly and directly go to the level of the classroom. So if we can share what we can and then allow for what's happening and, you know, the good work in the classrooms to continue. So there are a couple pieces that those of us on the Study Committee remind ourselves. And, you know, occasionally it's like, oh, yeah. You know, right now, we have got about 4,000 kids in our Supervisory Union. And a third of them attend school under a consolidated system, CVU. It's a consolidated governance structure. So a third of our kids are already attending school under a consolidated governance structure. With CSSU coordinating special education, transportation, professional development, human resources, and so forth, two-thirds of our combined budgets in our Supervisory Union are also under a consolidated system. If we add up CSSU budgets plus CVU budgets, that's about two-thirds. Yep, that's about two-thirds of combined $70 million. So we're already doing a lot of consolidation. And so in some ways, I think it's more transparent to make it more visible to everybody about how we're sharing resources already. So we don't, we don't want to lose the local piece. And that's got to be part of our discussions is how we continue to maintain that community input into what's happening. But we also want to use our resources in the best way we can. And we've been on this journey for 10, 15 years. And it feels like a natural progression in some ways.
And to that point, I would add that because the schools in CSSU have been on that journey of sharing resources and having unified curriculum, among other things, we on the committee really believe that things aren't going to be any different
No.
under a consolidated model from a number of operational aspects. Yes, it could be easier to share resources and so maybe more of that will come out. But in some respects, at least from where I'm sitting, the only difference is we're putting ourselves out of a job. There won't be seven boards, there'll be one board.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I, you know, if you have other questions or if the responses you got from us were unsatisfactory in some way, we'd welcome that feedback, so please don't hesitate.
I'm going to make it brief. I'm not in the committee, but what I need is flexibility. It gives us so much more flexibility, especially in times of tough budgetary times. You know, the state tells us you can only spend so much, so on and so forth. It just gives us so much more flexibility to run the schools better. I'm a local control guy. Local control's not going to go away.
Eloquent and succinctly stated.
On occasion.
All right, moving on to discussion matters. 7.1, Professional Development Calendar. Are you going to tee this up or do you want me to?
I was thinking that you were going to, but I can definitely speak to it.
Well, you know, I can tell you that we've had some discussions at board chairs about this. I think at least two, talking about a team from CSSU that has, of educators. It says LEED, but I can't remember what LEED stands for.
The Administrative Group of CSSU.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's the professional educators that are, that are examining our delivery of professional development and are suggesting essentially a model change from way too simplistic of a statement, but from all-day professional development every now and then throughout the school year to a more regular, shorter duration, delivery of professional development throughout the school year.
So I can fill in a couple of the blanks. So what we're proposing is early release, once a week, an hour earlier than normal on a Tuesday afternoon. The students would, as I mentioned, leave an hour earlier. That the reason why Tuesday was selected is because our staff meeting day per contract, we get one, actually, that's not true. I was going to say one staff meeting a week, but it's 30, is it 32? 32 meetings a year. So it's not so much one a week, but it works out more or less to one a week. So we have 32 meetings a year scheduled per contract. And tying an early release to a staff meeting allows us two hours of professional development time consistently and regularly throughout the school year. What we noticed, and Jeff Evans, Director of Curriculum or Director of Student Services, he mentioned a metaphor, is that when you're, when you're building the house, you don't meet with the architect in August and then let him go until January before you meet with him again to see how things are coming. And then you don't leave him be until, you know, the following June, when, when the house should be complete. But you need to meet with them, with the contractor and the architect regularly throughout the course of development. What we're seeing with teachers is that we're asking them to do a tremendous amount of work. And we're giving them professional development opportunities throughout the year, but in chunks of time over courses of months. So we've had our last PD opportunity for staff two weeks ago, three weeks ago at this point. And we won't be able to have a full professional development day again until June. This opportunity allows us the much more regular and frequent check-ins. Development we can bring in outside people to lead initiatives such as standards-based learning, the creating of the targets that Bill listened to in the presentation is a tremendous amount of work. But it's not only standards-based learning, it's not only proficiency-based learning. But it's, I could begin to list all of the initiatives pre-K through eight that we're asking our teachers to be involved with right now, whether it's Lucy Cawkins', K-5 Literacy Program, whether it's NGSS, a K-8 Science Initiative, whether it's SBL and PBL as it relates to Common Core and Sback. We're asking our teachers to do a tremendous amount of work with very little support. And with this model, we would be able to give the teachers the support and resources that they need in order to best help our students. Oh, do you, so I can also talk about the calendar as I see you looking at the calendar. We apologize for the timing of the communication to the parents today. It was to go out in a, in a weekly newsletter, but we didn't have a weekly newsletter last week. And we wanted to make sure that parents saw the information before the board meeting. The questions that I've gotten since sending out the information is wondering, when would we recapture? We're going to add four student days to the calendar to make up for the PD days, the full PD days that we used to have in the calendar. The calendar hasn't been adopted. One, one thought out there is to recapture a day in October, the two days in March, and to add a day in June. And those would be four additional student days. So that the students would be in-school 179 days, where the teachers would still be contracted for 186. So they would still have their pre-service time before school started. They would still have time after school. What would be gone is that the full days in the school year of PD time.
Is it fair to say that the amount of time lost through the hour early dismissal, weekly or mostly weekly, roughly equals the time that's made up by those additional days?
Absolutely.
I'm looking at the calendar and I'm, is it on this calendar, the days that are?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, it's because, because the calendar hasn't been adopted. It's, but I can tell you the most recent thinking where.
No, so I'm just thinking like that, October the 21st, it used to be the VSA, I mean, the VSBA day.
Yeah, the NEA days.
NEA days, yeah.
But if you take roughly 32, it's to go back roughly eight hours in a, in a student day, four, four days, that's 32 hours and that extra hour times the 32 weeks is, is the comparative there.
So students stay for lunch?
Yep.
And then, okay.
The other questions that came up through parent communication with me today, and I'm sure I encourage parents to continue to communicate with questions, but the other one was that the families that need additional support for that hour, scheduling and things like that, Imagine is going to be open as soon as from school dismissal until, until 6 o'clock as always. That's at no additional cost. Parents that may just need that day, I encourage them to come and to talk with me. We're going to make sure that every student has possibilities afforded to them. One question came up today, library is always open until 4 o'clock every day after school is up for Friday. And we wondered, a parent wondered if that would still be an option. And it was a, it was a great thought that we hadn't thought about, so we're looking into it. Another question that came up was around sports schedules and how that would affect kids. And typically, this year, sports teams either didn't practice or didn't have games on Friday. Most Fridays, there was no, oftentimes no practices, no games. So we are moving toward a coordinated effort with Chittenden County not to schedule any games or practices on Tuesdays so that the, for a couple of reasons. If we have increased numbers after school, we will have the gym available. But also, our teachers are often coaches and our teachers need to be in that professional development.
I know you had a question, but I wanted to point out, at least what this document I have says, speaking of efforts with other Chittenden County schools, there's always some comfort in having company. And there are other school districts throughout the state, including several in Chittenden County that are also doing this kind of professional development.
Through research, we know that sustained professional development has such a larger impact than incrementally throughout the year in large chunks of time.
Hold on one second, you get to go first though. Sorry, that's his prerogative.
So I know, Jeff, you apologize for the timing on this, but we, we blunt, we can't let this happen. A lot of parents feel, I've had several communications, communications today and they felt ambushed by it. Couple of Sunday, wanted to attend a meeting, but it was tough to attend with 12 hours notice. You know, I think, I know this isn't what, I just think it can lead to more questions like, this is a point at you, this isn't all of us, is, you know, they putting us to the last minute, trying to sneak something by us, you know, it's just, you know, is it a little nefarious? Is it, you know, we need time to have feedback, you know, so we just got to do a better effort so people aren't questioning what we're doing. The question I had, a few questions is, and I just want clarification on this, if a parent didn't use Imagine, but they needed the extra hour, would they be charged by Imagine for their kid to be there for that hour?
Well, I'd want parents to contact me directly so that we could work through. We have a large percentage of our students that do attend the after-school program. And I, I would like to have personal conversations. And even if it means 50 conversations, I would rather do that than give a blanket statement right now.
Okay, what then, the report I got to give to you on that from my perspective is, is that's all good and well. But I don't want it to also be seen as, hey, we're going to put this in place. There's going to be an hour of time. And if I can't get my kids at that time, the opportunity was at Imagine, but hey, this is generating revenue for the after-school program. I just want it to seem like that we're kind of filtering kids that way at the expense of parents. I think we all pay enough on our property tax bill for school and after-school care and just whether it's, you know, 10 bucks a day, you got three kids, it's 30 bucks a day, times how many weeks, you know, that's a significant amount of money. So I don't want it to seem like that, you know, it's another ad expense. So that, that's my feedback there. The other.
Can I, can I just get a clarifying point? When is, is this for next year? This is, okay, so it's not this current academic year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will this, so I guess not, won't require any additional busing schedules or anything like that, or will it? It will not?
Not for Heinsberg.
Oh, okay. Because I, you know, if it's going to, if this schedule change in my mind is as expensive, and we're going to, we're going to have a longer discussion about that, I think. That's, you know, we're cutting it pretty tight to the bone as it is. The other, the other comment I'll make is from my personal experience.
Yep.
I have no doubt that delivering professional development this manner can be, is more effective. Totally, it makes sense. I think about, so when I went to school, we always take it back to ourselves. We get out at 2:15 on Wed, 2:15 every Wednesday from K through eighth, 12th grade. And I just remember as a student, when I got older, have you thought about the impact on the teachers in the classroom on that Tuesday? How it's going to affect the amount of content they can deliver, you know? It's just something that, I hope you had those discussions, you know? I remember when I was in school, like you'd get the English class and you're doing your lesson, like, oh my gosh, it's, the class is already, we haven't, have we covered everything? So that'll have an impact too and it'll take work on the teacher's part, so. You know, I'm glad that you're looking at different ways to deliver stuff to improve it. I think that's important. So I don't know if I asked any questions, I guess I made more statements, but.
I just, I, I just wanted clarification of the proposal, when it was coming from and what kind of decision was being asked of us and when. And, you know, is it even a, I know we have to adopt the calendar, but where will the, the formal proposal comes from administration?
So, so, hold on one second. So I will respond to that and also to the audience and our television audience, that it is a discussion matter this, we're not deciding anything right now.
Right.
So to the extent you or you or you have any feedback, we can take that before we're going to be asked for a decision. Now, when we're going to be asked for a decision, that I'm not sure. That was one of my questions too, where do we go next?
So next would be, we're going to have the CSSU meeting in 15, 20 minutes. As part of the agenda, we will be asking each board to share out what were the conversations at each board level. From that, we have one month between tonight and the next meeting to work with boards, to work with board chairs, to work with faculty, staff, principals, to figure out like, okay, so either, either everybody says this is a wonderful idea, we support it, this is what the calendar is going to look like and it's going to look like this. Or after tonight, we're going to go back to the drawing board and we're going to figure out a process to vet it out to everyone again and come back in April with a calendar that could look like this one or could look just like the one we had last year, but fill in, you know, four professional development days instead of student days.
Yeah. I mean, I, I know you guys really want to get going. I, you know, from, from my perspective, I just, you know, it's like what goes around, comes around. At one point, we had had a half-day every Wednesday and it was just too early. It was, you know, we did it for a few years and then we decided to go to full-day releases. was, you know, we did it for a few years and then we decided to go to full-day releases. I, I appreciate the, um, understanding that we're into a different phase of professional development with Common Core and, and Next Gen Science Standards and so forth, that the implementation asks for something different. An hour in some ways seems short, but I also think it seems like it's maybe a good compromise between parent needs and faculty needs, but I have no idea what faculty think about this, I trust that administrators have been thoughtful about it. I don't have an opinion, I'm just making observations of.
And ju, just, uh, just remember it is a two-hour chunk, uh, it's an hour early release, but because it's tied to a faculty meeting time, uh, it's a two-hour chunk every week that's at our access.
Yeah, okay.
So it makes it a little, yeah.
You can do more in two hours than you can, yeah, okay, thank you for that clarification.
You guys can figure out which of you gets to go first.
Um, my first piece of feedback that's very simple is, I, I will have both kids at CVU as of next year, but I always like to keep in mind the whole picture, and I think it would be more congruent and helpful for parents to have the CVU and the Heinsberg, however you do the professional development days lined up, because the way I read it was CVU is gonna do a late start one day a mo, or one day a week, maybe, and then HCS was going to do the, the early release once a week, and I think that is a nightmare for parents who, um, who have kids in both schools. So that's, I would like you to think about that a little bit, and then I'd also like to talk about from both perspectives as a parent, and then I do, I feel very strongly about, um, teachers having professional development, and there are so many, uh, things put on them nowadays, and I believe really strongly in that. Um, I want them to, to have a lot of voice in that, I'm assuming they have, but I'd also like to kind of look at, or ask that you look at other models, because once a week for a parent who's, I was a stay-at-home mom, I was a teacher, then a stay-at-home mom for a very long time, and I timed my whole work schedule back with when my kids got back, got into school, and for someone who relies on that two forty-five, three o'clock pickup time, I mean, I'm working till my very last second and then picking up my kids, and so once a week, that can be really difficult. So my, one of the things I wanna say about looking at other models is the district that I work in now, um, does once a month half-day, and that's just another model, and I'm just, I guess I'm just saying, can you talk to your teachers that, about what works best for them in terms of chunks of time, and also the parents try to really make them connect, because I was so happy when the half-day thing went away, but I do understand they need more time, I totally get that. Um, so my points are, I'd like, I'd like to think about syncing up the CVU and the HCS professional development, so that the timing, it's not late morning for CVU and an afternoon for HCS, um, and then just maybe possibly looking at other models, so it's not once a week the parent has to figure out what to do that afternoon.
Can I go?
Please.
Um, so for the, to Mr. Baker, thank you for pointing out this idea about the email coming out at seven thirty-six this morning, I don't think it's enough lead time, I think there are other voices that would be here had they had more lead time on this discussion. Um, I have to say, I'm really, as a, as a teacher, um, I want professional development, I don't want it on Tuesday afternoon, I don't know how to make an A B block schedule work with Tuesday being a wild card day. To be honest with you, I think I could make Wednesday work if Wednesday was the day, so there's like this kind of arbitrary na, you know, nature of it that I'm concerned about, like, how do you make a revolving block schedule that allows project-based learning around part-time staff work? And how we looked at that, and I know how complicated our schedule is, just trying to make band work is incredibly complicated and how we work around that, and so now you add a one o'clock dismissal, you want your part-time staffer there for professional development, or do you want them there to teach kids on the days they're there? You know, do you run blocks Mondays and Thursdays? You know, that's a strange, to me, that's a strange way to do it. I know, I've been at school forever, we used to have Thursday faculty meetings, which worked really well in our system, and it was around how you did your week and get ready for the next week, and we moved it to Tuesday, so the whole district would be on the same day, but we never took advantage of that opportunity, we never, I've never been to Charlotte to their faculty meeting or Williston, and I've never, or I guess I can't say never, I've seen, very rarely has that happened, and is Tuesday just an arbitrary day that was picked, because now the district always has faculty meetings on Tuesday. I also have to say, there is extra expense, cause there's gonna be a Wednesday bus pickup for CVU, which I, I don't know what that means, I don't know, are we robbing Peter to pay Paul to make that work? And I also know from my co-curricular life that, um, kids can't attend on Fridays, cause they get switched custody, and parents, those, those weekend parents are very protective of those hours, and they start showing up at four o'clock or two forty, like exactly the minute they're allowed to take those kids, and so kids in sports programs and things like that, and we try to limit the Friday activities, and we've had a lot of discussion about trying to do dances on, on, you know, like when we have a, you know, Friday off, could we do it on Thursday night or Wednesday night to help make that activities available? So I just think there's a lot of issues around this that, like, I wonder how much of those have been thought out, but the biggest one being scheduling, and as a middle school teacher, scheduling is huge. We are part of a complex puzzle, I'm not self-contained, I can't make up Tuesday afternoon on Wednesday morning, I have to figure out how does that work with my four different groups that I have to meet throughout a week, um, and that can be extremely challenging. And I also too, like, in terms of professional development, last year, the model was, um, as social science teachers in middle school, we met as a district, and it was the best year professional development I have, I'm the only social science teacher in our building, so when we do, you know, cohort groups, it's me, you know, like, and I have, I have my humanities connection and, and we do work together, so we have that, but the power of being able to get together as a district, and the professionalism that it, the respect you feel when you come in this building, or however hundred we are as a group, and we sit down and we discuss what's going on is very powerful, um, so, I don't know, I got a lot to say on this, so I'll stop now, but schedule is the really, is huge, and has that been considered?
Thank you for that input. Um, any further thoughts on this discussion matter before we move on?
No.
Um, we'll go to seven point two, policy. Uh, if you look through the materials, the policy committee is not recommending any changes.
No.
So I think we can probably move through that pretty quickly. Um, seven point three, communications boards corner, next article submission.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
There are two topics that I can imagine that we need to cover, topic one is Act Forty-Six, so that could be something from this board, but it also can be something consolidated from the committee, what we talked about last time, but this certainly is a ripe topic for communication. It's a shame, well, you're, you're still a central office administrator, my personal view is this is a SU-wide effort, so it's imperative that communication come out and that communication be consistent across all the schools. So, I think this is a topic that is very appropriate for communication from the Heinsberg Board to the Heinsberg community, but I don't wanna write it, I think it should be written by someone who is either on the central office staff or a board member who writes it, who then is vetted and approved, so that it's a consistent message across all the, uh, school districts.
Yeah.
Further thoughts?
Yes, agreed.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right, seven point four, post-vote reflection, any thoughts on our annual meeting and our vote, other than thank you to our community?
Yes. Next year, um, recommendation that actually started brief conversation with some select board members at the end of the evening is, um, maybe propose having it in the K eight building next year, our annual meetings, to give people that connection back to the K eight building. Select board actually came from the.
Would, would meet there too?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that was my, legit, I was, that was, I was wondering, logistically, wouldn't that be a challenge if they then had a meeting here? Oh, but they would hold both meetings there?
Yeah.
I like that.
I like that too.
And, um, there are some other community members that wanna figure out how to bring food into it, so that people can break bread together.
Hmm.
So, just, just so you know, that some people are thinking about how to do it differently.
Back in my day, all the.
Yeah.
Grandmothers in town would make donuts and coffee and.
Oh, man.
It was all.
Guaranteed to be good food if we could do that.
Chewing the fat and.
And we know we can't have food in the gym, but, um, just something to think about.
I love the idea.
Cause there's, you know, very strong interest in, in keeping the close ties to the community, and one thing about, um, what the select board does is with all of the different committees, they are definitely, you know, keeping, um, people engaged in our local community, and if you think about seventy-five percent of our households do not have kids in school, um, this is one way to get kid, get people in the community back into our K eight building.
Love it, yeah.
Um, so, uh, thank you very much, Colleen, that is actually very helpful feedback, and I would like to see that carry through next year.
Yeah, be fun.
So I have failed at my first, uh, task as chair this year.
We'll forgive you, whatever it was.
And not kept us on time, so I guess I'm looking for your feedback on what we should do. We have to go to an SU meeting in a couple of minutes, but we have some important other things to talk about, and then we have some, you know, uh.
I, I.
Procedural things that we can very quickly go through. Should we just finish the things we can go through and then come back for the substance?
Yeah.
Or should we just stop now and come back and leave off where we are and come back?
Well, can.
Cause I, I don't think we can not do those things.
Can I make a motion to, one motion to approve the minutes and?
The consent agenda?
Consent agenda and all that.
I will entertain that motion.
Second.
All right.
Consent agenda, anything else you need to approve?
Nope, that's all, whatever's in there.
All right.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Bill and a second by Colleen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries, then I'll just confirm the next meeting dates while we're on the record. Um, our next board meeting date is April twenty-sixth, at seven o'clock right here, uh, the SU board meets at five o'clock on that same day, board chairs, April seventh, uh, new board orientation member, April sixth, which might come into play in a minute, um, and the Act Forty-Six public forum on Tuesday, April twelve, at six P M at CVU, as Colleen mentioned, when we covered that. So logistically, how do we handle that with video if we take a break for the SU meeting but then have to come back for?
It might not be on.
Ten or fifteen minutes.
It won't be on.
Yeah, I guess, are you gonna be covering stuff a weekend?
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna cover seven, five, seven, six, and seven, seven. Okay.
Can I ask, without, not to direct, direct, but can Mike run down, see if there are a lot of people there or not, and see if we gotta, see if we gotta, do you mind doing that, or?
What time does the next meeting start?
Seven.
Right at seven? There was no.
Well, that's, I think what Bill's saying is there might be a little slippage.
Do you mind not doing that, Mike?
Well, let's, let's keep go, let's keep going then, and we'll go to seven, we'll come back to seven point five, HSD board vacancy appointment, so, uh, Stacy's absence notwithstanding, she is still a board member, but we do not have a fifth board member. Um, I can tell you that our administrators asked legal counsel about what, if anything, we have to do, and the answer is, we have to have a fifth board member.
And we appoint?
And we can appoint. Uh, he or sh, that appointed person holds office until next March, when he or she then has to run for, uh, that seat, so the, we have to have someone, so the question is, how do we go about getting someone?
I would ask for our, um, board chair to do some vetting and make a recommendation to the rest of the board.
Okay.
And my concern is that we be able to act in a timely manner.
By vetting, do you mean soliciting for interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I guess that's more appropriate.
Okay. Do you think it would be acceptable if I posted something on Front Porch Forum, which seems to have a fairly wide dissemination in town, and say that we need a fifth board member, anyone interested, please?
We do know, we have, um, you know, we do know that there's somebody who does have a strong interest.
Well, that's good, but I also don't wanna foreclose others who might, for whatever reason, not have stepped forward.
I would, I think we need to get someone appointed as soon as possible, I think if anyone had interest, they would've ran, I think, so.
There's no doubt about that.
So I feel that we would not be, um, being transparent. I, I, I think as the bor, as the body of the, of the school directors and the board, that we have the right to go and, um, talk to people and find a person and appoint them after we give them, do, do discussion amongst ourselves and make sure that they're, you know, wanting to do it for all the right reasons.
And we've had to appoint before, we've appointed for CVU.
Okay, so it sounds like you have some people in mind who have approached you or both of you, so if, uh, we follow through on Colleen's suggestion, why don't you forward me those people's, uh, names and any material that they might have submitted, and I'll have a conversation with them and I'll come back with a recommendation?
Maybe if they could write a brief, very brief statement about why they wanna do it, so we could get that in public record.
Perfect, okay, will do.
Okay. All right, um, let's come back to seven point six on the principal hire process, and we'll go to seven point seven on the teacher appreciation day, appreciation day, both because I think this might be short and because it doesn't require, uh, Elaine Pinkney, our superintendent's presence. So one of the things we talked about at board chairs a couple of weeks ago was how the role and participation of the board at teacher appreciation day throughout our various schools varies. Uh, some have a lo, a big board presence and some have none, and I think we fall into that latter group, and I'm, would like to change that. So teacher appreciation day, appreciation day is May third, I can't remember what day of the week that is right now, but I'd like to do something. So Jeff, can you help us do something on that day or that week? You know, even as simple as buying coffee and donuts and camping out in the cafeteria or some other appropriate room to, you know, show the faculty and staff that we appreciate what they do and have us show up. You don't have to be there the whole time, uh, you don't have to stay the whole time, but if you're able to show up, I think that would, that would go a long way.
I like this lock door, yeah. Five dollars.
Good idea.
It's doors locked.
It's tough by the state of the town. Uh, so Keith?
Yes? I'd be happy to set something up. Um, Pi has traditionally, uh, been responsible for teacher appreciation day.
Yep.
And they don't always follow whatever the calendar says is the teacher appreciation day, but they take a look at what's happening in the school. Would you actually like it symbolically to be on teacher appreciation day?
No, no, my understanding that it was sort of, it might have even been during that week, but someday during that week, I understand Pi does stuff, and that's wonderful, I'm very appreciative, we are very appreciative of that.
Okay.
But we'd like, you know, sort of one morning to be a special message from the board.
Absolutely.
So that we don't have the overlap with Pi, so that there's an understanding that, that we also appreciate them.
And can you tell me the week again? May?
It's May third, so it must, it must be the week of May second.
Okay, yep.
All right. So then the only thing that we have left is on the principal hire process. So do we come back or will still do it?
We stand in for.
Okay, all right, all right. So just let me tee this up for everybody, for everyone in the room and our audience who's joining us. Uh, we recently learned, uh, that Allegra Miller, one of our co-principals, is not going to return next, uh, school year, for which we are, of course, saddened, uh, and of course very appreciative for her, uh, contribution over the last three years that she has been here, but that leaves us in a situation where we then need to figure out what we're gonna do.
Wanna start? You can start.
Um, so I'm not sure where the board is, I mean, I think at this point Elaine's recommendation would be to hire another co-principal, um, so we would be prepared to post that, when the board's ready for us to, and then she'd be looking to establish a committee with board reps, um, teachers, staff reps, administrator reps, um, and get the hiring process going as quickly as possible. And I believe she's retained. And I believe she's retained Mike Deweese to be the facilitator of that process.
Would I be correct that, in assuming that there is some urgency to acting upon this?
Yes. Mostly, you have the best hiring market you're gonna get right now.
Thoughts?
Like this week.
Sounds good.
Yes.
You heard it here first.
Okay.
Actually, actually, wait, what do you think?
On what part?
Co-principal model?
Yeah, so Elaine and I have had a conversation, I, I think what, Allegra is definitely gonna be missed, we've talked about that, but really taking a look at my strengths, and, and places where I know that Allegra filled in, not filled in admirably, but the skill set that she brought complimented my skill set really well. So, I really wanna focus in on, on areas of strength and areas of need, and trying to find someone who complements that, both ways, myself as well, I, you know, I think someone has to, has to look at me the same way, in terms of what it's gonna look like. You know, the co-principalship is, is, is the name.
Fluid.
Yep, but what it looks like, might look differently. Might look the exact same, depends on the candidate pool, and, and what, what people are, who applies, and, and what the committee feels like, but I'm, I'm a voice, I'm one voice of many.
Okay.
So, good?
Yeah.
All right, there you have it.
And now you're linked, as Williston just walked by.
Not, notwithstanding our attempt to put things off, we're actually done.
Yes.
We've covered, we've covered everything on our agenda, so I will entertain that motion to adjourn, Colleen.
Pick your second?
Aye. Second.
All those opposed? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.